The Committee of the Whole, from March 4th, 2025, is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Urban is absent.
Okay, we have the approval of the minutes, 25-0168.
Second.
The minutes, Tuesday, February 18, 2025. Committee of the Whole meeting is moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Any corrections to the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I understand we have no mayor's report this evening, and we'll move on then to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to give an offer of public comment?
We do.
Okay, will you please call the first, or will you play, will you say the rules for public comment?
Yes. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the Committee of the Whole for up to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person, other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order, may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the Committee of the Whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person to offer public comment this evening?
Denny Wora and Veronica Adami.
Yes. Welcome, your three minutes will begin now.
Thank you. Thanks for giving us this opportunity, and I want to thank all the members of the City Council for allowing us to be part of this. Some of you know me, some, I know some of you. I'm Denny Wora, and I'm the past president of the CPAA, and I am a graduate of Class 35, and I've been active for about 12, 12 and a half years with that group. This nice lady is Veronica Adami, she is our current president. She graduated from Class 41 and has been active for nine years. Veronica is also the recording secretary with the Aurora Crime Stoppers. I'd like to turn it over to her.
Good evening, City Council. For the past 30 years, the CPAA has worked to enhance the relationship between our community and the Aurora Police Department. We try to foster a partnership of communication, trust, transparency, and understanding. Beyond that, one of our missions is continual education to our over 300 members. We offer that through monthly meetings. Beyond that, one of our goals is to also support the Aurora Police Department with purchases that are outside of their budget. Through past fundraising efforts, we've supported our canine officers, we've sent police officers to critical training and educational seminars, we've made purchases to community outreach events, and so much more. What is our Give Back Gala? Our Give Back Gala is our annual summer fundraiser. This year's theme is "Good Cause for Old Paws." After about eight years of service, the canines retire and are no longer supported financially by the City of Aurora. Quite often, the canine handlers take ownership of the canines, and along with that, they take full financial responsibility of their food, their medical attention needed, and everything to sustain the rest of their lives. These canines have become accustomed to a certain brand of food. The CPAA has committed to an ongoing initiative to support the food expenses for all of the APD-retired canines to ensure a healthy diet.
Okay. There's a packet being handed out, but I just wanted to start with, what are we asking you for? Okay? Well, we'd like your personal support for the Citizens Police Association. We'd also like a financial support for the Give Back Gala. We have a couple of things in the packet, there's a letter that will explain everything about what we're trying to do. Our gala is going to be at the Aurora Country Club, it's on Friday, June 13. That's a great day, not a bad day. So we're going to look forward to that. In there, you're also going to see a card that says, you know, hold the date, we'd love to have everyone there, up here, be with us, and at this point, we're going to ask you, for each of you, to donate to us, and there's a giving levels card in there as well.
Your three minutes are up, thank you.
Thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have the name of the next person?
The next speaker is Rick Lawrence.
You have three minutes beginning now?
Last time I was here, we talked about Ken Maurice getting arrested because he didn't want the mayor's sign in a property that he owned. Mayor didn't take care of that. Ken has a court date tomorrow morning. He had to hire a lawyer, all because he didn't want the damn mayor's sign in his yard that he owned, and the mayor didn't take care of that. It's too bad he's not here tonight, but everyone knows it's about the time he goes to Florida, gets his free place to stay, or maybe he's on a free jet ride down to Mexico again, who knows? It's typical of him, but he didn't take care of it. Maybe all the aldermen that were dancing around on the stage, the night of his election thing, the dismal thing, maybe you'll all be there when he runs for senate as soon as this is over, because he's not going to, he doesn't want to be mayor, he wants to take off and do the jets and do everything else. While Ken Maurice has to spend money defending himself over a sign, and nobody cares up here. Nobody cares about that. Did you reach out to him? He's your constituent. You know, this isn't a game. This is real money to people like Ken Maurice, a good person who doesn't hurt anybody. And our mayor cares so much, he's gallivanting around with who knows who, the next one, on the next jet, or the next free place to stay in Florida. You know, at one point, City Council has to be independent and do their job and hold people like the mayor accountable. It isn't about dancing around on his stage, doesn't do the constituents any good for you guys just to say yes to everything that's put in front of you. And while Ken Maurice and people like him pay the price for the mayor's shenanigans or whatever you want to call it, I hope you guys start to hold that guy accountable, because it's wrong for somebody like that to have to go through that. And I hope you actually reach out to your constituent, because that's wrong, that you didn't even bother to give the guy a call. But that's typical of you.
Will you please read the name of the next person willing to give a public comment?
That was the final speaker.
Okay. We go to the committee reports, will Alderwoman Smith give the BZNE committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. The Building, Zone, and Economic Development Committee met on February 27, 2025, and reviewed the following items. 25-0152, An Ordinance Establishing a Conditional Use Plan Development, Approving the Abbey Meadows Plan Description, and Amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Aurora, by Modifying the Zoning Map Attached Thereto to an Underlining Zoning of R4A, Two-Family-Dwelling District, to OS1, Conservation, Open Space, and Drainage for the Property Located on the East Side of Randit Road and Mesa Lane Extension. Consent? 25-0153.
Consent.
An ordinance amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to rezone approximately .01 acres of property located on the east side of Randit Road and Mesa Lane, extended from R1C, One-Family-Dwelling District, to a conditional use to R1, One-Family-Dwelling District, to remove the property from the Marmion Academy Plan Description. Consent?
Consent, this item will be placed on consent. Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Barrero.
I just wanted to make a comment on these three, 152, 153, and 154. I did attend the public hearing, and there were some residents there, they had some questions, and their questions were addressed satisfactorily. There were some issues, but those were, we could address those after, I mean, notwithstanding the development, you know, regarding some, you know, truck traffic and things like that. But for the most part, their questions were answered, they were satisfied, and I see no issue with putting these on consent.
The next item, 25-0154, A Resolution Approving a Preliminary Plan and Plot for Lots 1 through 51 of Abbey Meadows Subdivision on Vacant Land Located at the East Side of Radiant Road and Mesa Lane Extended.
Consent.
25-.
This item will be placed on consent.
0165, An Ordinance Vacating a City Easement on the Property Located at 4173 Ogden Ave in DuPage County, Illinois 60504.
Consent.
And 25-.
This item will be placed on consent.
0177, my apologies, Mayor Protem. A resolution initiating the public hearing to consider the revisions of Aurora's comprehensive plan for obvious changes throughout the City of Aurora.
Consent.
This item will be placed on consent.
That is all we had for the BZNE meeting.
Thank you, Alderwoman Smith. Please, Chairman Carl Frankel, will you give the Finance Committee report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The Finance Committee met on February 27, 2025, reviewed the following items. 24-0915, A Resolution Authorizing Director Purchasing to Enter an Agreement with Upland Design Limited, of Plainfield, Illinois, in Mount Natixine, $160,000 to design renovations to Garfield Park. $160,000 includes any potential additional costs due to unforeseen expenses. The RFQ was sent out as a result of us receiving a $600,000 OSLAD grant for the project.
Consent.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question on that.
Alderman Barrero.
Yeah, my question is, there was a master plan that was developed for this park, and my question is, is the drawings, the construction drawings going to be based on that, that master plan that was being shown to residents?
Kent Shroth, Public Works. So I think that would have to be discussed with the new park superintendent, but there was several open houses that were held as part of this OSLAD grant, and then there was also an online survey that was conducted, and so there was some morphing of the plan, but I'm not certain if it matches to the master plan that you speak of. I don't know if Alex has additional info or if someone from the public properties-
Alex, Alexander, Chief Management Officer. Alderman Barrero, the master plan was taken into consideration, along with the feedback and the survey with the residents and those meetings they had, and ultimately, the plan that was approved for an OSLAD grant is what we're moving forward with today. So we do have an additional phase that we'd like to do in the future, but right now, we're focusing on getting this sort of Part 1 of OSLAD implemented, but we'd like to do some additional work, so we're looking for future opportunities to apply again for OSLAD, but we'd like to get this one done first.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a consent?
This item will be placed on consent.
Consent.
Okay.
25-0147, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Redevelopment Agreement Between the City of Aurora and North Island Apartments LP to Provide a Loan in the Amount of $400,000 in Community Development Black Grant Funds for the Roof Replacement of Affordable Senior Housing Development Building Located at 2 North Stove Avenue. This roof rehabilitation will allow the city to continue with support for affordable housing. In this case, it preserves 56 affordable housing units.
Consent.
Consent, this item will be placed on consent.
Question?
Alderman Denal.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I did read through the report and noticed that the elevator was repaired, but I think we all know that there was problems with this elevator at one point in time, I just wanted to maybe hear from staff that we think the elevator's sound and we don't have to have any issues with that, because it was down for some time.
Good evening, members of City Council. Christopher Gona, Director of Community Services. So we do have a member from 2 North Stove here, Mr. Hugh Ryder, if I can invite him up to maybe talk a little bit about some of the actions that have taken place.
Yes, Mr. Ryder.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So North Island Apartments was obviously, the building was built in 1913, we redeveloped it in 1998, I believe was the actual date. Your question about the elevator was actually caused by a power surge from ComEd. It shouldn't happen again, we did put a robust surge suppressor in at the same time, so I don't think it's going to happen again. It's under a maintenance contract now with the subsidiary or the remaining person from Kone Elevator, Montgomery Elevator, excuse me, which is no longer in business, so that was the full crux of that matter. We've, it was very difficult, when an elevator company goes out of business and you have all proprietary equipment in those elevators, they're very difficult to actually fix and to get them back operating again, especially when so much of the equipment was french-fried from the power surge, that was the cause of the whole thing.
So just to follow, so the elevator's in good working condition, and are parts available to repair if this happens again?
Yes, and we did take steps to make it harder for it to happen again, let's put it that way. We did put a more robust surge suppressor in it this time around, then the elevator had been working since 1998 without issue really, and it was a one-time event.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Alderman Lash.
Thanks for being on top of that. I know I haven't received any calls on it, when it was down, we received quite a few, but has it gone down, since it was repaired, and today, has it gone down at all?
Off the top of my head, not for any significant amount of time. Sometimes something will get jammed in the door, which will pop it off the track, that sort of thing, but they're fixed within a couple of hours if it is, it's not.
No further questions, thank you, Mr. Protem.
Okay, consent?
Is there consent on this?
Consent.
Thank you. I'm going to read the next four and let Mr. Gona talk about the whole process, and then I'll come back and revisit it, and we'll see if each one goes on consent. First one is 25-0148, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Modification to a Redevelopment Agreement Between the City of Aurora and Community Housing Advocacy Group and Development. She had to modify loan terms of Project Home 2010-01. 25-0149, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Modification to a Redevelopment Agreement Between the City of Aurora and the Community Housing Advocacy and Development, modify loan terms for Project Home 2011-01. 25-0150, Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Modification to a Redevelopment Agreement Between City of Aurora and Association for Individual Development to Modify Loan Terms for Project Home 2012-01. And 25-0151, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Modification to a Redevelopment Agreement Between the City of Aurora and Association for Individual Development to Modify Loan Terms for Project Home 2013-02.
Good evening, once again, members of City Council. Christopher Gona, Director of Community Services. So these four items were the result of an audit conducted by city staff as part of, you know, pretty regular monitoring, as we are checking out the sites to make sure they are still meeting all of the federal requirements. So within this audit, our goal is to match, what really comes down to, some minor details to further comply with home regulations, so we're looking to match completion dates through the various agreements, mortgages, notes, land use restriction agreements. We want to match our income requirements, we wanted to clarify our units as well as our performance periods. And then in the last item, for the property of 843, 845 Boadage, we're looking to adjust the HUD period from 15 years down to 10. What this will do is further reduce the risk of the city in the event that that property no longer meets the home requirements. And what we're looking to do is add a five-year extended use period that the city has, so we can deal with it at the city council level. So, you know, with all of these, the idea is to meet the home requirements as well as, you know, reduce the risk.
Any questions?
So I will go through each one, I will read the number, and if there's a consent, we'll let it know, if not, we can put on unfinished business. So first one is 25-0148.
Consent.
This item will be placed on consent.
Next one is 25-0149.
Consent.
This item will be placed on consent.
Next one is 25-0150.
Consent.
This item will be placed on consent.
And next one is 25-0151.
Consent.
And this item two will be placed on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 25-0171, A Resolution Approving a Service Agreement Between the City and County of Kendall for the Provisions of Demand/Response Transportation through 2027. This agreement between the City and the Kendall Area Transit will assist the program for Aurora residents as there is a shortage of resources to cover the need for ridership overall.
Consent.
Consent, this item will be placed on consent.
Next one is 25-0181, this will be at hold to the next Committee of the Whole meeting, so we won't be addressing that today.
We'll hold this at the committee level then?
Yeah, we'll hold this at the Committee of the Whole level. And next one is 25-0182, A Resolution Authorizing Approval of Loan Agreement Between the City of Aurora and Jamie Gilmore, and a Third Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement with Urban Equity Properties for the Purpose of Facilitating the Redevelopment of the Vacant Commercial Space Located at the Ground Level at 2 North Broadway in Downtown Aurora.
David Debo, Director of Economic Development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, aldermen and alderwomen. As the chairman said, we're here to discuss facilitating the construction of partially-finished space, which we've all passed many, many times, the retail space at the bottom of the terminal building at Galena and Broadway. At the Finance Committee, where it was unanimously approved, we had the entrepreneur, restaurateur Jamie Gilmore here in person to speak. If technology is with us today, she's going to be on the screen, she's at her restaurant, oh, she's over here.
She's here.
Okay, well, I'm going to come right to you, are you okay in terms of all the other stuff you don't?
I'm absolutely okay, I just literally ran away. Happy Mardi Gras, everyone.
Okay, well, maybe I'm going to be given, okay, given that Jamie is taking the time out, it's Fat Tuesday today, and she's got the restaurant in the West Loop, so what I'm going to do is change things around a little bit, because Jamie's on the screen, maybe what I'll do is have Jamie introduce herself, the restaurant concept, and then I'll talk a little bit about the numbers, I was going to do that first, but let's do that, because we've got Jamie on the screen, and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, my sincere apologies for not being present in the location, I would have preferred to see you all in person. I am Chef Jamie Gilmore, I'm the owner of LJ Hospitality Group. We've been around since 2019, and we started out in the Lincoln Montrose is our area, currently we are in the West Loop. And we do a little bit of what I call a elevated brunch concept, what we do currently, and we're going to expand that concept from brunch, lunch, and dinner. It's rooted in soul food and New Orleans-based food, however, we're expanding it and making it more of an international, appealing to every nationality, we don't want to just limit things to just one group of individuals. So what we're looking to do is to, like I said, offer service for all three, for brunch, for lunch, and for dinner, and we'd like to have the opportunity to offer dinner service for the theater, have like a special dinnertime for the theater. We have a special time for the dinners, where we're going to do a specific menu just for the theater attendees, as well as offering an afternoon tea with having just light bites in lunchtime, when you're just looking to grab a quick bite to eat in the afternoon. So just to give you some idea of what we've done in the past, when we started out, our numbers were as low as just like $5,000 to $7,000 a month, and now we average about $35,000 a month, and we were doing those numbers without any type of libations in bar. So my prediction is once we move into, based upon what we add to the menu when we do a complete service, we should be able to produce 1.5 million within our first year, keeping those same numbers, those same production numbers, about $35,000 a month, until the concept really gets off the ground and people get introduced to us.
Thank you, Jamie, I'm going to just see if anybody on the council would like to ask Jamie any questions, because I know she's going to go back cooking after this, but does anybody have any questions?
Just to-
Alderman Smith.
Those numbers that she just gave again, could you repeat those last numbers you just said, Jamie, a minute ago?
Absolutely. So currently, where we're at, in our location at Lincoln, here in the Fulton Market, we do a counter service with approximately six to eight items, and we do about $30,000 a month. So what we predict, starting out in our new location, hopefully in downtown Aurora, we will be at about $35,000 per month, once adding a bar service as well. And our prediction is, within our first year, we'll be able to produce 1.5 million, is what we're looking to do in revenue.
Thank you so much for repeating that for me.
Not a problem.
And before you leave, I just wanted to add, as one who has formerly patronized the old Broadway- the old Broadway diner many years ago, in fact, I grew up eating there with my family. It's good to have a quality restaurateur back in downtown Aurora at this space in the terminal building, and we wish you all the best.
I am excited about giving you something, something brand new and something reminiscent of the past and something where families can come and dine together as well as your patron at the, the theaters.
Thank you. And Alderman Lash has a question?
The average price per plate anticipated for a meal per, per person?
Absolutely. So we're trying to, we'd like to have a, a ticket point of about 35 to 40 dollars would complete. That's if you had a drink and a, and something to eat. So if you just had a beverage, I'm sorry, if you just had an entree and no beverage, we'd be about $17 a person. Fifteen to 17 is the, is the average price is what we do.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions at the council? Anything more to add, David?
Well, I'm going to continue and maybe let Jamie go out and cook.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm going to stay on, but I'll mute, okay? And if you need me, I can pop back in.
I have to say, it is exciting. We, we presented this originally last week when it was still Black History Month, the idea of having a, a female minority entrepreneur during that month. And we've had a bunch of different deals that we've been working on with people, but it is exciting to have people that are, you know, Jamie lives in Aurora and she's going to be concentrating, you know, virtually all of her efforts in Aurora. I do want to, we also have, and I'm, I'm going to turn it over to them in a little bit, Justin Fern, the principal of Urban Equity, who you've, many of you have known before, and Jeff Ordano, the chief operating officer, and they're going to speak in a little bit to answer any questions. So we're going to have everybody here to talk. Chris Minnick is also going to speak a little bit about the Transformation Fund. The dollars that we're going to be speaking about today as it, as it relates to the city side of the equation, and what we try to do with all these deals is, and, is to make sure that everybody is sharing in this. And as we always say, that the city is the last one to come in. We're the, we're the gap. If there's a shortfall, then if we have to come in, we, we come in. And if we do come in, we make sure that we're getting a return of our money and a return on our money. And Chris Minnick is going to speak a little bit more about how that happens. But it's very important to understand that, especially as we moved on in this process, that these are not monies that we're just giving away. These are monies that are loans that are coming back to the city and coming back with interest. So they are essentially assets of the city. You could be sitting there and have cash on your balance sheet, or you could have loans on your balance sheet. And in this case, there are loans that are benefiting the city. And Chris will talk a little bit more about that. That Transformation Fund, we, we had a lot of discussions here about that, but just to refresh everybody's memory, the city was able to secure $16 million of, of funds that were really not anticipated as we did these very complex data center deals at Eola. And so the city literally got $16 million, and Chris will describe, again, just to refresh everybody's memory about how those monies were allocated. Some of it were to a Transformation Fund. So if we had a situation like today, we're able to tap into those type of monies as opposed to the general fund. That Eola deal is the home run of the home runs. We, it is really going to expand our tech corridor. We were there at the opening last week of Edge. You could see that data center is now completed. And just to give you an idea, the real estate taxes there were about $4,000 a year. When all those data centers are built out, and there could be as many as four of them there on that hundred acres, your taxes are going to be $4 million a year. Just that kind of difference. And that doesn't include the utility taxes that we're going to get. So that, that deal birthed a lot of the benefit that we're able to secure from today. The terminal building, as the mayor Protem mentioned, was a diner, popular diner that closed in 2003. So it's been vacant, you know, for over 20 years. And then the upstairs were vacant, you know, 45, 40 years before that. Let me, let me describe the, the deal that we're looking at. So the entrepreneur who's here today is going to speak, Urban Equity, the owners of the building, they will be putting in an additional $350,000. So they'll describe the investment that they've made so far in the building, but they will be putting in another $350,000. On the city side, the city is going to make a loan to Urban Equity for $200,000. So taking those numbers together, that's $550,000 that either is going to be contributed by Urban Equity or guaranteed by Urban Equity. And the city will, it's the asset that the city will be getting five and a half percent interest on. Aside from that, Jamie Gilmore, who you just heard from, and this is why Alderman Smith, it was an important question to ask about the volume, because we will be advancing her $250,000 as a loan. And that loan will get paid back by our sales taxes and our food and beverage taxes, and that equates to 3.75%. So if you do the math, that payback should be no more than nine years and it could be a lot less. We modeled that structure, this whole structure actually, after the success that we've had with J H and Leilani and Giardini. In those, in both those situations, we had advanced a loan, a traditional loan, which is being paid back now currently, and a sales tax loan, which is now getting paid back at a faster pace than what we originally estimated because those two restaurants are doing so well. So because that structure worked fairly well, and because there was a lot of analogies between what happened at the Hobbs Building when that was being reconstructed during COVID, and this building as well, we thought that we would do a similar deal. Getting back to the essence of the deal, so we talked about the 350 and the 200, that's 550. Jamie would be putting, will be putting in $100,000, but we're only going to be crediting her with 50,000 because the other 50,000 is for working capital. So we've got the 550 and another 50,000 is $600,000. And then we've got the Jamie money, which was $250,000, and then a finish line grant for $50,000. And if you add all those numbers together, that's $900,000, which is approximately the cost to finish, to finish, to finish the terminal building. So with that, and I'm coming back for questions, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Minnick, and then Chris is going to turn it over to Urban Equity, and then we'll open it up for any questions that you have.
Good evening, Council. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer. Just like to remind everybody a little bit about the specifics of the Transformation Fund. The Transformation Fund will actually be the source of funding for the incentives that we're discussing and the loans that we're discussing this evening. Transformation Fund was essentially negotiated during 2024 as a, the repayment of a contribution, a recapture, if you will, for improvements that the city had made in the area of Eola Road and, and I-88. At one point in time, there was consideration that that intersection would develop with traditional economic development types of, of items such as commercial areas, hotels, perhaps, perhaps restaurants, et cetera, and some, some stores. But the city was approached by some data centers that wanted to locate there. So as part of the discussions of that particular development, there was a recapture payment that was negotiated in the amount of $16 million. The city received that $16 million in, I believe, July, late June or early July of 2024. And we had several substantive conversations with the council, as you may recall, in the late summer and in the fall, related to that Transformation Fund. Of the $16 million, $5 million has been earmarked for the Aurora Regional Economic Alliance area. They have received a $3 million disbursement approved by the council back, I believe, in October. And there's an additional payment that may be coming and, and may be approved in the future based on that, that allocation. Additionally, $1 million was set aside for historic preservation and was included in the city's 2025 budget. And another $1 million will go to fund a facade improvement program, leaving the remaining $9 million that makes up the bulk of the source of the funding that we're, we're discussing this evening. So that $9 million total allocation from the Transformation Fund is set aside actually in its own fund on the city's books. And the intent of this particular $9 million allocation is to make investments in economic development programs and projects that are going to provide a return and provide repayment of principal interest and interest back into the Transformation Fund, creating in essence a revolving fund that, so that $9 million can be multiplied in terms of incentives citywide and, and continue to perpetuate that $9 million investment. As Mr. Debo indicated, we will be actually setting aside that, the amount of these particular loans to Lizzie J and to Urban Equities, the $450,000 will be set up as receivables. We will be receiving five and a half percent interest. Just as a little bit of a sense of scale, we're currently earning a 10-year T bill right now is returning about four and a quarter percent. So we're a little bit above with the interest rates on these, on these two particular loans. We're a little bit above that 10-year T bill rate and what we would expect to earn at that particular time. As these payments come back in, they will be reinvested back into the Transformation Fund, and that pool of money would then be available for other projects that may come forward, requiring some form of, of city incentive or loan, again, with the return that those future projects would again, pay it back to the Transformation Fund with interest, creating additional monies and additional returns. So allowing us to invest the $9 million in total that we received from that particular development recapture payment, allowing us to invest it many times over in the community.
Any questions, Mr. Minnick?
Mayor Protem, I-
Alderman Smith.
Kind of a three-part question.
Okay.
First part being, when do we foresee this project being complete? And second and third part is, with these two different loans, what is the timeline for the loans? When do the loans start? When does the payback start? And then, and then is there an end time or is it just when it gets paid back?
Uh, the loan to Urban Equity is a traditional loan is called, is intended to be begin, uh, the repayment period will start March 1st of 2026, so one year from now essentially. And then I believe that the, the Lizzie J would, would begin roughly on the same timeline. They, we do anticipate that the, that they would be approximately nine to 10 years in duration for those repayment periods. So those, those are the items and the numbers and the amounts that are, are incorporated into the redevelopment agreement as well as the amendment to the RDA.
So presuming that means that the restaurant will be operating by March 2026?
Yes.
Will be the end of this year?
I will let Justin talk.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Minnick? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was on the council during the initial RDA for the terminal building. Did that initial RDA include the redevelopment of the first floor? I know that it, it included the apartments above, but did it also?
I believe that the standard was to go to a white box, wasn't it?
It's a great question.
We did contemplate both at the Hobbs Building and in this building that it would cover it all when the cost and, and I'm going to have-
David?
Thank, thank you. So in both the Hobbs and the terminal building, yes, we had expected and, for a full white box. And when I set up here, I called a partial renovation. So there is work, and I'm going to let Justin and Jeff explain exactly what they were able to do with the funds that they had and how much extra money they did put in. But even with those funds, it was short and that was never really fully white boxed. So the $900,000 that we're talking about would complete that as well as all the kitchen equipment, the black iron and so on, which wasn't necessarily contemplated. We always hoped to do a restaurant there, but that wasn't necessarily contemplated. They will talk to you about the tenant that they thought they were going to have, but disappeared during COVID.
And then it mentions the default remedies of potentially going into the TIF. I'm assuming because this is being funded through the Transformation Fund, first of all, both, both the loan to Gilmore and Urban are both coming out of the Transformation Fund, is for clarity?
Correct.
Okay. And then because it's coming out of the Transformation Fund, the part to, to withhold payment from the TIF payments is that if, if there's a default over the course of the nine-year?
It's just leverage that we've got. I mean, it's an 80/20 TIF, so we are getting money from the TIF. But if for some reason there's a default, it's a remedy of ours to make sure that we hold everybody's feet to the fire.
And, and that would only work for the developer, not for Gilmore, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But we do have a personal guarantee from Jamie Gilmore. So she has put up her house, her life as a guarantor of that loan as well. For, for some reason, the 3.75 on the million and a half or million two does not cover it. If you, if you do that math, that should produce 40, $45,000 a year. The debt service should be something like $35,000 a year. But if, for some reason, it doesn't work, and we all have been privy, right? Things don't work sometimes. She's standing behind that loan personally.
Okay. And then I don't know if this will be a question for you or for Urban, but what is the rental agreement between Urban and, it's for them?
But, but we, we were all party to it. So with that, but I'm going to, I'm going to be here for the next round of questions, but I would like to introduce Jeff Ordano and Urban Equity.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm Jeff Ordano, the Chief Operating Officer for Urban Equity Property. I've seen many of you before, but not all of you. So we're here to talk about Lizzie J's, and I think it's auspicious that we're doing on Mardi Gras. So hopefully by this time next year, we can celebrate Mardi Gras in Lizzie J's. Want to talk about the context of this just quickly. We have a downtown building. Downtowns, we think the things we've observed are important, are residential, which we now have, cultural, which Aurora is blessed with, with many things, and businesses, including retail and restaurants. This would play a key role. It's been lacking a diner for a while, as Mayor Protem Seville pointed out. Time, the context of time is important here. COVID changed a lot of things, including the development deal we had. COVID came along, increased costs 30 to 40% on essentially everything, created pressures of both time and money. And by the grace of counsel here and our work, we managed to get through that. We got the project done. But we also, in that process, lost the originally anticipated restaurant tenant for that space, the Woodfire Pizza location. They still, to this day, are a successful restaurateur, but they were concerned about operating, operating a restaurant post-COVID in what was to them an unknown market. So here we are. Then we have the context of the building itself. It sat long vacant. It is now fully occupied on the residential floors, as is the Keystone. But the ground floor space has been vacant for a long time. And we've had a few inquiries, but none of them were of the top tier like Chef Gilmore is. We had things that would have gone in there that frankly, I don't know that anybody would have been super excited to say, hey, that's what is at the zero-zero address, essentially city center of our city. So we think this is a great opportunity with Chef Gilmore. She's a top-tier operator, kind of one of a kind, and, you know, it, it's the kind of place that you'd be excited to go to whether we're here or in New Orleans. You'd say, that's a place I want a reservation for brunch. So when we look at this, the math of it, essentially, we originally, if we go way back in time, envisioned putting about $500,000 into this building. We ended up putting in about $2.8 million. And then now we're looking at putting in another 350 plus the 200 loan that we'll be paying back. So we, you know, we're, we're doing what we can. We are not a huge development company. We do these projects. We've done around 20 of these buildings. This was far and away the hardest of them, partially because it occurred during COVID, partially because specific things within the building. partially because specific things within the building were challenging. There are things, when you go into these buildings, every one of them is a little bit different. It's not like new construction, which can be a little bit more like operating in McDonald's. You know how to build a Big Mac, and there aren't really that many surprises. Here, you go into a building and you have some surprises. And here, there were surprises, and that's okay. We got through them, and again, thank you to the council for your support in doing that. But as it turned out, we lost our planned restaurateur. And to be clear, there was always going to be more capital needed for the restaurateur on the ground floor. There was not some magic pool of money within the original money that was going to pay for, you know, a complete and utter full build-out for this restaurant on the ground floor. We always knew that that was something we would need to address. So we're excited to be here today and have the energy that Chef Gilmore brings to something like this, have something that everybody will be excited and proud and enjoy going to, not just people downtown and the residents downtown, but people from all around town, people going to the Paramount, people visiting from other communities. That this, we anticipate this will be a destination restaurant. So we are fully energized about this and hope you are too. So thank you, and obviously, I can answer any questions. Justin Fern is here, the Principal of Urban Equity, and he's happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions?
Quick question. So you had mentioned something that you originally were going to invest a half a million dollars, and then it came up to 2.8. That can't be COVID. How did that gap, how did that happen that was such a difference in what your projection was?
Sure, Alderman Franco. That, and actually, that's just our equity. That's not, obviously, the full investment in the project. Costs rose on things astronomically. Lumber went up, I want to say, this sounds crazy, something like 1,000%. The cost increases were astronomical. The carrying costs also were punishing during that time. So we had a project that extends, in part, because things are delayed. You know, everything from windows to other, all the other sorts of things you need for a building, delayed, therefore, we're now paying more interest. We ended up restructuring the whole deal, both with the city and with another lender, to get the project done. So that's how we ended up with a lot more money in the project than we anticipated, not just the raw cost, because, yeah, you think about those costs, but then there's all these other costs and cost of time and money to go with it.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
Alderman Smith?
Yes, so as we sit and listen to these grand things about these restaurants are always very exciting.
Of course.
And often, we've been told that, you know, they'll open in a few months, and then we're waiting six months, eight months later, and they're still not open. We're still wondering where they are. So is the end of the year, is that your optimism, or is that realistic? Do you see it to be opening up by the end of the year?
We think the end of the year into early next year. And I'm not trying to shift your question. The reason I say that is we do have historic preservation requirements to meet for the building. That has some extra timelines, but we're well-advised of those, familiar with those. And in the restaurant, it's kind of a finite number of things. There's the signage outside, there's some flooring inside.
So the end of the year is as soon as it will be open, but definitely within the first quarter of next?
Yeah, that's in, everybody's math is based on that. And we're optimistic that Chef Gilmore, being an experienced operator, I think is a huge difference for her compared to some other people. And then obviously, we know the building, so it's not a new space to us, and we know what it'll take to build it out. And we have our own crew, we have our own general contracting company that will be handling the build-out.
That's an important point, I just want to make sure that that came out. So they don't always general contract a smaller project like that because they're doing buildings all over, you know, 100 units, 50 units, 200 units. But as part of the deal to get the costs down, because these costs, the first bids came in like at a million two. And they stepped up and said, you know, we're just gonna do it for the 900. It's tight, but we're gonna do it for the 900 because they have their own construction crews that they're gonna divert from other projects and make sure they do it here, which we thought was the right thing to do, because that was the essence of the original deal.
But you understand what I said. We sit here and we do these restaurants, and we're ready for them to open. You know, obviously, we understand there's a process to go for. But, you know, sometimes six, eight months later, a year later, they're still not open. So just gonna start looking for a little more clarification as we move forward. And, you know, the reality of when, you know, what is your, would you optimally want it to be open, and what's the reality of when it's gonna be open? So that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, we're not pieing-the-sky optimists, Alderman Smith, or Alderman Smith. It's, you know, Mardi Gras is February next year. So when I say I hope we're celebrating there, I think that's a realistic possibility.
That one I'll hold.
So, yeah, all right, all right. Well, and that helps us make our first payment in March. I think that's when the first loan payments do. So we'll be cash flowing by then.
Alderman Lash?
I had asked a question about what is the lease agreement between you and Gilmore?
The city, the city has a draft of that, and, Justin, do you recall the terms?
Thanks for the question. Yeah, I mean, the lease agreement, it's pretty cut and dry, like most commercial leases. I believe it's a 10-year term, somewhere around $3,500 per month for her. We really worked hard to keep that rent rate much lower than we probably could have asked. At the same time, we want to make sure she's successful and the restaurant's successful and here for a long time. So we worked with her and with the City of Aurora team, and that's where we, I think that's where we're gonna have around $3,500 per month on a 10-year.
And then is it a prevailing wage project?
Absolutely, yeah.
Alderman Lash, it is under the terms of the original redevelopment agreement. That would carry over.
David?
I think we've got it. Any other questions?
Any other questions at the city council?
I think I have two more questions I'll take with you offline, if that's okay afterwards, and put it unfinished, but I'm close on this, so.
Be happy to. And then I just do want to mention, and Alex just reminded me of this, you know, because of these building, all these deals that we're talking about, like, you know, Lillani and, you know, they're in historic buildings. So, you know, very often, some of the delay is, again, they've got to go to the state historic people and the federal historic people. I know during COVID, one of their big delays was they couldn't get answers, and they had to make decisions. But I will say that the historic stuff in the buildings, just take whatever normal delays you have, and they exacerbate it.
Alderman Lash?
I will ask one other question. So we are getting the tax revenue on this and the 5.5% interest?
Correct.
The food and beverage tax, okay.
Correct, that's all in the deal, yes.
Thank you.
Unfinished, Dan?
Mayor Protem.
Alderman Mesiacos.
Thank you. Sir, when I first met you about seven or eight, about seven years ago, you came before us as a developer. When you came for the redevelopment agreement, you told me you came before us as an attorney. What are you today?
Still true, well, both, chief operating officer and still an attorney.
All right, I'd like to ask the ownership, then, portion of the group here, this can be prevailing wage project?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Unfinished business, then? Is item replaced under unfinished?
All right, this is ununfinished, and Mr. Mayor Protem, that concludes the report from the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you, Chair Franco. The next item is the PHSNT Committee, and I will give that report. 25 dash 0072 is resolution authorizing approval of the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Amendment, 2025 Annual Action Plan, and substantial amendment 2025 number one.
Consent.
Consent? Okay, this item replaced under consent. The second item is 25, I believe, Alderman, Bug, will you be recusing yourself from this item?
From the vote, I believe I'm allowed to stay for the initial discussion.
Okay, thank you. So let the record show that. And so 25 dash 0075, resolution approving the 2025 Quality of Life Grant in the amount of $910,773.
Unfinished?
Unfinished? And Alderman Franco, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna put on consent, that's fine.
No, I ask one unfinished, if Alderman Bug has to recuse himself.
Okay. Yes. Any other questions? Item replaced under unfinished business. Resolution establishing the maximum number of liquor license, I'm sorry, of licenses for tattoo and body art establishments in accordance with Chapter 25, Article 11, tattoo and body art establishments for 25 dash 0161.
Consent.
Consent, and this is for 4450 Westbrook Drive in Ward Eight. Same replaced under consent. That is the report from the PHSNT Committee meeting on February 11, 2025. Chairman Garza, will you please give the INT Committee report?
Yes, please. INT, we met on February 24. The first item is 25 dash 0143, a resolution awarding the 2025 Sunny Darry Sur CIPP lining to National Power Rudling Corp. To the amount of $894,315.
Consent.
Consent, this item will go on consent.
25 dash 0162, a resolution to award the N. Kingscomb Drive and Kangleywood Place Water Main Replanting Project located in Ward Five to Gerald D. Sur and Water Company in the bid amount of $1,48,165.0 cents.
Consent.
Consent, this item will go on consent.
25 dash 0163, a resolution to award the Broadway Avenue Source Separation Project located in Ward Four to Performance Construction and Engineering LLC in the amount of $3,328,777.
Consent.
Item will go on consent.
25 dash 0164, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase a one-year renewal of DocuSign Contract Lifecycle Magnment CLM subscription from Car Shop Technology Corporation of Reston, Virginia for an amount not to exceed $94,720.80.
Consent.
Item will go on consent.
25 dash 0170, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Fox Valley Music Foundation for the calendar year of 2025.
Consent.
Consent, this item will go on consent.
That concludes the meeting, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Garza. Chairman Ron Warman, please give the wrap committee report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Rules, Administration, and Procedures Committee met on February 18, 2025 and reviewed the following items. 25 dash 0135, recommended changes to the Alderman's Office Mileage Reimbursement Policy.
Consent.
Next item, 25.
I'd like to put that on unfinished.
Unfinished, this item replaced under unfinished.
Next item, 25 dash 0137, a resolution appointing Brad Banks to the Sister Cities Commission.
Consent.
Consent, this item replaced on consent.
Next item on the agenda, 25 dash 0141, An Ordnance Amending Section 2-185 of the Code of Ordinances with respect to the obligations of the members of the city's boards and commissions.
Consent.
We just want to know briefly while we're doing that. You want to speak to that?
Good evening, Alex Voight with the mayor's office. So the background of this item is summarized in the memo, but what it is focused on, not quite yet, John, but what this one is specifically focused on is 2023, the city council approved some amendments to our ethics ordinance pertaining to campaign disclosures and outside employment. Those changes were incorporated primarily for city employees and our elected officials. When we made those change, it included our boards and commissions. We have a group of them, which are listed in the memo, that are also required to complete those disclosures. And when the city made our change locally, we changed it to a brief survey that's done quarterly. And to the best of our knowledge, that's been working quite well, again, for certain employees and our elected officials. But when it came to the boards and commissions, it was extremely cumbersome. So after reviewing the ordinance, it was not our intention initially to include them. So what we are asking the council to approve is to remove them from the quarterly requirements. They will still be required to complete the annual state ethics disclosure, which, again, is still available online if an individual wanted to review. If any of our boards and commissions members do have a political campaign and someone wanted to look at it, all of that information is available. So that's what this is limited to. The process will remain exactly the same for, again, our employees and elected officials. At the wrap committee, the request was made to provide the information on where individuals can go to find the boards and commissions information. So I did include that, just some draft language as an attachment to your item now. So that should be there, and I can take any other questions.
Any questions of Alex Voight? Alderman, Alderman debate?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So in the document, it is listed only seven of these commissions are required to file annually.
Correct.
And the other board members are not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, sorry. Do these board members, commission members also have to complete a statement of economic interest, state level, is that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and that's available on the King County Clerk's website. Do we make it available anywhere?
So we do not, but if you look at the attachment that was provided, we are going to include the link on the page so that it makes it easier if someone did want to look something up.
Okay, thank you.
Consent?
Consent.
Okay, thank you.
This item replaced on consent.
So then, next item on the agenda, 25 dash 0144, Boards and Commissions Report.
Consent.
There is no action needed on this here, so.
No action, meaning this doesn't go under consent in general?
Correct, yeah, so. Are you gonna do that?
Yes, I'm happy to provide this. Alex Voight with the mayor's office. I did provide a presentation to the wrap committee on ward distribution and membership, et cetera. And the committee asked me to provide it here this evening. So in 2025, we are at 35 boards and commissions total. We've added three new ones this year, the AGN Community Advisory Board, the AANHPI Advisory Board, and our Sister Cities Commission. We have some boards and commissions that have specific membership requirements. I'd just like to list those here for the council's reference. It's, again, represents a small number of the actual boards and commissions. So one of the things that we talked about at the wrap committee was the ward breakdown. And one of the topics of conversation were the non-residents. So I was able to go back and find from our original presentation back in 2022 the 2014 ward snapshot. So what I thought was interesting here, for everyone's reference, is in 2014, we had 22 total boards and commissions. And if you look, our percentage of non-residents was about 21%. And the ward distribution was heavily, heavily in wards four and five. So I had talked about that at wrap, and I was able to find a visual. So moving to 2023, which is prior to last week's presentation, the last time I'd done this for the council, we had 28 total boards and commissions. Our, you can see the ward distribution has certainly improved greatly. Still very heavy on the west side of town, wards four, five, and six still have a lot of representation. But you can see that our far east side communities have increased, and the non-residents increased only by 3%. So for 2025, we are at 35 total. And I should add, this pie chart only represents 34 of the boards and commissions because some of them that are still working their way through the approval process are not in the system. So this is only 34 represented here. But you'll see that, again, the ward distribution continues to improve. And our non-resident is a little bit higher, but this pie chart represents 292 people. So in the grand scheme of things, again, we're still very focused on having City of Aurora residents, but we do have non-residents that serve as volunteers for us. This is just a side-by-side comparison. The wrap committee is fairly competitive, and they like to see who has the most board members represented in their wards. And again, in 2025, as of February, we have 292. And that number will jump when our, when we have the AANHPI members move their way through in a couple of weeks. And then one of the conversations at the committee was for the non-residents that serve on our boards and commissions, how many are employed in Aurora? And I apologize, I didn't put the number on here, but you can see the vast majority are employed in Aurora, so therefore, they are spending a significant amount of their time in the city. And anyone who's on the outside, what that means is that they are retired. And anyone who's on the outside, what that means is that they are retired and they would have a connection to the city through either volunteer service, those types of activities. But the vast majority are connected through the city by employment. And that's it. I can take any questions?
Any questions from?
I have a quick comment.
Alderman Smith.
What this shows us is that we're getting volunteers across our whole city.
Yes.
And I think that, you know, part of that is attributed to you and your work that you do, but I think this is a wonderful thing for us to see. It's a wonderful thing for our residents to see. So thank you for bringing this tonight to show the committee as a whole. I think it's important for us all to know, no matter how competitive we are and how many people we have volunteering, it is, it is definitely a city effort.
Yeah. Well, and I thank you for that, Alderman. And I do want to thank everyone when we reach out to you looking for members. Everyone has been really helpful in terms of helping us identify people. So we're getting new faces on the boards and commissions. And also I want to thank Sylvia Vargas and Yvonne Hernandez in the mayor's office who do a tremendous amount of work on this.
Mayor Protem, I had a quick comment. Not bragging, I'm just saying that it's, it's helpful to have the information with respect to, you know, the, the people that are serving on boards and commissions as to what ward they live in. And then, and then being able to find, you know, where, where the holes, where the gaps are to try to find a resident, you know, in our wards to serve. And I do have good news. I've been out there beating the bushes and I had a person come up after one of the meetings and said he wanted to serve and he was interested. So all we got to do is, you know, keep pushing it.
Thank you.
Alex, I just had one request. If you could forward this report to, to us.
Sure. I'd be happy to.
It's a good report. Thank you for doing this.
Mayor Protem?
Yes. Alderman Bug?
Thank you. I'm going to do something a little different. I'm going to address our people listening tonight. I made a statement at committee about this. The first thing I said when I made my statement was, we love our volunteers, our super volunteers. That's what I called them. Some people listening online contacted a person back and told them that I suggested that he needed to step down from some of his committees. And that statement couldn't be further from the truth of what I said that night. All the people on the RAP Committee can attest to that, that you can attest to that. And that super volunteer, that's what he is, was upset from some information that came in through text or however, social media, distorting the facts of what we talked about in RAP Committee. So I just say this to people listening, everything we do impacts people, everything. So let's be kind, let's be thoughtful, and let's move our city forward.
Thank you. Alderman Bait, Alderman Bait.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Alex, if somebody applies for a board, for any of the boards or commissions?
Yes.
And there are people who are serving on other boards and there are new applicants, is it first come, first served basis or what's the process? Can you just go over it?
So is your question specific to if there are no vacancies and we have someone? So it depends on the situation, but for individuals that we do have serving on multiple boards, many of them have expressed that if we do have people that want to join a board, they would be happy to step down. So it, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. I am going to tell you it doesn't happen very often, but we would handle it however was appropriate for that specific board or commission, if that makes sense. But we do, if we have people that are interested, we do our best to find a spot for them. I mean, we do like to make sure we're, we're getting people incorporated where we can.
So whoever applies and they don't get in the board or commission is, and somebody leaves in future, do you approach that person that, okay, there is a vacancy and you can apply now?
Yes. Or we would just use their application, reach out and see if they're still interested.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Just to reiterate, we did confirm at RAP Committee, to set the record straight, we don't have a waiting list on these boards and commissions.
Correct. Correct. Yeah.
There's no action.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Thank you.
Oh, wait a second. Please, Ms. Voight, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Protem, Mayor Protem. You know, I can't recall how I, I found myself on the CDBG board when I was a little younger, just a little tad bit younger, a little bit more darker haired, but I don't regret it. And then somehow I found myself on the plan commission and provided some hair-raising comments for the chairman at the time, who sits next to me right now. But long story short, I want to get to the point of, I do it once in a while out of curiosity because of, you know, having been involved as well in the plan commission and whatnot, just checking the online agendas for some of these boards. My question to you is, I'd like some bait. I'd like to information, maybe some status information on yearly or at least what, what's happening to share with the community. Maybe we can bring some people on board, maybe more from the third ward to compete with the fourth and the fifth that have, you know, a lot of, a lot of members already, if that makes sense.
Are you?
I mean, in a nice way. I don't mean in a bad way, but you know, try to fish people in to see if they can, you know, if they want to participate, gain their interest.
For, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Getting their interest in participating and putting their resume in to be on a board. Is there a way that we can find some information about what they're talking about?
Oh, sure.
Any status on any of those topics moving forward? I mean, I, I, it's great when I run into a member at an event or whatnot and, you know, just try to pick their brain and they talk about all the exciting things that are on.
So the city's website has a lot of information and each board has an individual page with information about what the board does generally. However, if someone has specific questions or if they just say to you, I want to get involved, but I don't know what to do, you can always send them my way. I'm always happy to speak to people. Or we can have them talk to the staff liaison that works with the boards if there are vacancies available. So probably the easiest way is send them to the mayor's office and we can set them up with someone.
So there's no way to maybe give them some information on any recommendations they might come up with on these boards?
Well, it depends. I mean, you can always look at the agendas and minutes to see what people are up to specifically. But if you have someone that, if you're looking for.
The agendas are very generic.
They are.
Yes.
That's what I was going to say. If you're looking for something very specific that a board is doing, you can reach out to me or to the staff liaison and ask those questions directly.
And I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm just trying to, I'm not looking for anything specific. I'm trying to learn what might be happening. It's a lot of work for one person to sit down on top of everything else and try to figure it out without having to go to the meetings and hear what they're saying.
Do you want, do you want us to schedule, are you suggesting that we have members of the boards come and do reports, like we have staff come and do reports?
Well, we've had that. Thank you for saying that. We've had that with Sustainability Board a few years ago, about a year and a half ago, if I'm correct.
We had the Human Relations Commission, we had the Sustainability Board, Bike Pet, CRB. We've had quite a few come through.
Okay. Okay. Well, I didn't want to sit there and make that kind of a request, but if it's, if it's viable to have that happen, that'd be great. Just trying to get more information to share with the community at the, you know, when we sit down at the third ward and what's happening as well to get, to pique their interest of what's happening. Maybe you can, we can draw them in. I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at. Trying to work with you to extend your list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get at.
Okay. We can work on that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I do have one clarification. So just for bragging rights, that Alderman Lash and myself are tied for the number of residents on the boards and commissions. So just let me know when you guys want to talk.
So noted.
Knock and knock.
Next item on the agenda is, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is twenty-five dash zero one three six, oh, I'm sorry, twenty-five dash zero one five seven, a resolution approving the appointment of Gretchen Tim to the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Consent.
Senator will go on consent.
Thank you. Next item is information only. It's a resolution, twenty-five dash zero one three six, a resolution authorizing the 2020, 2025 Ward Nine Scholarship Program.
Okay.
Yeah, it's information only. So that concludes Rules Administration, Rules Administration and Procedures Committee.
Okay. We have two items under new business, twenty-five dash zero one eight seven, motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the city and workers' compensation claims, number 22Q 051558960, 23Q 051562255, and 20Q 051559206. Do we have a report on this?
Do we have a report or anything on this?
Do we have a report on this?
Anybody that can report?
These would not have been a report. These would have been provided by the Human Resources Department in the way memo.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions on this?
So moved.
Consent.
Consent.
Consent. Question? Alderman Franco?
Not to deal with that. Are we trying to take work away from the clerk like we're these?
Oh.
That's okay though, because, I know, I'm just trying to, you know, keep job, job security.
I wanted 50% of the deal, so you can read the second one. So the first one we placed under consent.
All right. Are you ready?
Yes.
Twenty-five zero one eight eight, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement with the King County Health Department for an opioid overdose reversal agent vending machine at the Aurora Transit Center.
Consent.
Consent.
Mayor Protem? I just wanted to make a comment. Mr. Polly's been coming to meetings and making the case for this and, you know, it's, it's very heartwarming to see that on occasion when, when residents do come and bring an issue to us that we're able to address it, and so I'm glad to see this. Thank you.
Alderman Lash?
I just thought the Aurora Township offices is also going to have one of these vending machines or distribution machines. It's close. I think that ATC is, is a better location, given the people that go through there. So I think it's excellent to have it. I just wanted to point out that there are two in, in close proximity in the fire station right across the street. But if there are any other locations that we think are ideal in the city to, to partner on these, I think we should try and work to advance those. But I'm 100% in support of it. I just wanted to point out the proximity and it might be good to have them at other locations in the city as well. Thank you.
Alex?
If I can just add, Alex, Alexandra, Chief Management Officer. So we have been working the entire time in collaboration with the King County Health Department. So I want to thank Mike Isaacson. I want to thank the King County State's Attorney Office who reviewed, along with our Law Department, the, the intergovernmental agreement that you are, you have before you. And yes, we are continuing to look at other locations. We're in constant communication with our fire department, our paramedics. As you know, respond to these types of calls every day throughout their rounds. And so we like the central, very public proximity of the ATC, especially with the bus depot also connected to the train station. And so staff's going to be alerted. We have a, a perfect spot for it. And again, Alderman Lash, appreciate your support and we're going to continue to make sure we look to see where else we can put it. I'm happy that the township is doing it as well. So we appreciate the opportunity that we were given. So we appreciate also the Alder folks approving this.
Okay.